Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the County Board of County Commissioner meeting for June 21st, 2022. At this time, I'd like to give Commissioner Stapleton to do the indication in place. Would you all stand?
Mr. Chairman. The Board is coming for you today to do the business of the county. We ask you to give us wisdom and guidance. We ask you to please continue to watch over our law enforcement and law enforcement around the world that protects us every day and give us the opportunity to be here and represent the people of this great county. Say all this, cross my heart and pray.
Amen.
Amen. I'm led by the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get started with item number one, approval of minutes for the June 7th, 2022 Records Board Meeting and the June 9th, 2022 Special Call Meeting. Is there any discussion or motion for approval?
Mr. Chairman, I'll vote for two.
Motion by Commissioner Flynn.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to the consent agenda. Items two through 10. Is there any discussion or motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Lynn, second by Commissioner Stapleton. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Are there any Commissioner items at this time? Any county attorney items?
Yes, sir.
On the general business item number 11, discussing possible board action permitting of property assessed, clean energy pace program within the limits of the county. Frank Swain and County Attorney Jimmy Pruvet.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Come on, not all. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, I'd like to introduce to the Board here Mr. Ryan Marcus. He's the Pace Director that's putting forth this particular program. We have hearings with the Florida Development Finance Group. What he's going to do is go ahead and outline, since the last time we had a pace program come before the Board, it's been a number of years and only a lot of you were here at that particular time, so I've asked Ryan to outline the program itself and then for the particular program that he would like to have instituted in the county. Ryan, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chair and Commissioners, appreciate your time. Staff, thank you.
Can I get your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. I was going to apologize.
I'm sorry.
My name is Ryan Marcus and my address is 1137 Duncan Drive, Winter Springs, Florida, 32708. I'm with, as Jimmy indicated, I'm with the Florida Development Finance Corporation and we administrate the Florida Resiliency and Energy District, which is one of the four districts here in Florida that allow us to place pace assessments on properties voluntarily by the property owner. Currently, we are a C-PACE only, which means we only have commercial pace providers underneath our umbrella and I believe you guys have the Florida Pace Funding Agency that you approved back in 2015 and I believe they provide both residential and commercial, but underneath our program, we do commercial only. So I'm going to walk you through that and if you guys have some questions, I'll answer them. And also tonight, we have Kirsten Beck here. She's a consultant with JBS, which is a project that's looking to use the funds for their project. So I don't know if you guys have in your packet our sub, kind of our presentation, if you guys have this. If not, I can, got copies I can provide you.
It's at the very back.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So if you guys, if you turn to the first page, it talks about relaxed pace, just kind of give you a broad overview. So PACE is called Property Assessed Clean Energy. This is a public policy initiative that was created through Florida Statute 16308 and it sports qualified improvements to real properties related to renewable energy, energy conservation and efficiency, and wind hardening. So those are the three elements that can be improved on buildings. If you flip to the next page, I kind of wanted to give you an overview of how this program begun. So in 2008, the state legislature found that they wanted to reduce energy consumption in the state of Florida, they wanted to increase building energy performances, and they adopted energy conservation planning requirements for local governments. So to institute those local requirements or to help you with those local requirements, the Statute 16308 was created. Again, these allow for the qualified improvements that we just talked about, those three elements to be improved on the property and they are considered special benefits to those properties. So it allows us to levy and collect assessments for the repayment mechanism as a local government. So I wrote "local government" on there because when this program was created, it was started for either a county or municipality to actually administrate this program. Leon County and I believe Miami-Dade tried this on their own. They found administratively, this was very difficult and time consuming. So enter in Florida Statute 16301, which allows for a couple municipalities or a county or municipality to come together and create a special district. That is what happened and you had four special districts that were created. The one that you guys have adopted already in the Florida Pace Funding Agency and now you're looking at the Florida Resiliency and Energy District as a district that allows, that would be able to levy and collect these assessments here. We call these PACE districts. And then in 2013, as the last part of the history, this was when the first assessments were levied through PACE and to date, our district has funded more than 21 projects actually now for $81 million. And if this project goes through, it'll greatly increase that funding amount. If you flip to the next page, this kind of gives you an overview of the PACE local governments we just talked about, which were created through 16308 subsection 2A. And to do this, as Jimmy had indicated, this is going to be an adoption of a resolution that can be abhorrent. Here, you guys will be looking for a resolution and if you guys adopt this resolution, then there's an inter-local agreement that would be executed at the end of that for us to move forward. The local government provides to the county a turnkey program. So as I discussed before, the administration of this was difficult for counties and municipalities, so stepped into the special districts. It allows us to administrate. We assess, we're an assessment administrator also, which means we collect the data on each one of these assessments, we gather it, put it together and work with the tax collector to place that on the tax bill. And we also have program oversight of each one of our program providers. Again, if we move forward, this allows to levy and collect these assessments and we would go after services agreements. If you guys move forward to adopt and sign off on our inter-local agreement, our next step is to go for services agreements with the tax collector, the property appraiser, and allows us to place these assessments, which are similar to your solid waste, drainage or street lighting assessments. So the next page is just a little bit about our district. Well, our district board is made up of five members. Our district is made up of all city managers or assistant city managers and the Florida Development Finance Corporation was picked to administrate this program. And just a little history on the FDSC, we were formed underneath Florida statutes, underneath Florida Statute 288, Part 10, and we are a statewide special development financing authority for economic development purposes. So if you flip to the next page, this will give you an idea of our footprint of where we are in the state of Florida. So this is not just in, you know, one part of Florida, this is growing throughout Florida. When it initially started, it did start in southeast Florida where was where most of the rooftops were located and the program has continued to move forward in the panhandle since 2015. If you flip over to the next page, I just wanted to let you know that this is also not just a state of Florida program. This is a national program. Right now, it's in 37 states and it's continuing to grow as you go through state to state, especially on the commercial side of this program. If you flip over to your next page, I just wanted to give you a really broad overview of how the C-PACE financing process works. So in our process, we're going to determine whether a project or a building is eligible. So depending on the boundaries that you set up underneath this resolution, we were looking for the entire boundaries of the county to include the municipalities. If that happens, then we can place or place assessments on any property that would like to have a assessment placed on the property within those boundaries. We'll review construction documents with the provider and determine what are eligible improvements that is completed with an engineer. So it's not just us determining whether there's an eligible improvement or not, we are looking for a licensed engineer to give us that information. We look for executed term sheet, we review the amortization schedule with a financial advisor, and then we go to our board for our final assessment resolution, which is the first step for the adoption of the assessment. Once the, once it's adopted by our front board, then we go ahead and we'll record also a summary memorandum, which is the lien in public record. We look for the statute, 16308 requires notice to the senior lender. Under the commercial program, 98 to 99% of the time, we receive consent. So the senior lender is receiving consent. And then on the project closing side, we review, all the documents are reviewed by multiple councils. We go into a closing funding, I talked to you about the summary memorandum, and then we work with the tax collector closely. It's, when we work with the tax collector, what I mean is we are really developing that product for them, the data that they need. We upload it or provide it in a form that they request. If it's CSV, if it's another format that they request, we send it to them so they can upload it to their system to develop the tax bill. And then these assessments are annually. So the final assessment resolution I just talked to you about is the first year or the initial year of the assessment and then every year, my board needs to meet and we do an annual assessment resolution. So there's a new lien that's placed every year. Okay? If you flip over to the next page, these are typical eligible improvements. So you're talking about age-backed systems, you do roofing, the building envelope, which includes windows and doors, hot water delivery systems, which are a large part of the hospitality network here in Florida, high efficiency lighting, solar is not typical, but can be done, and then large motors and drives and wind hardening products can be included. If you flip to the next page, these are eligible properties that can use these assessments. It's a multifamily, industrial, office, retail, hospitality, mixed use, special purpose. So in Orlando, we did a water park, could actually use this, so it's a little bit of everything. And then medical is also an element, or excuse me, a property that can be, that can use this assessment to improve their property. So the benefits, if you flip to the next page, this is probably the largest part of this program to your property owners here in Florida and to this project. So underneath this program is 100% financing of hard or soft cost. The terms can go up to 30 years based on the effective useful life of that element or the improvement installed. So if there's a warranty on the windows and doors go out 20 years, effectively, they can go out to a 20-year term. The C-PACE, the loans of value on these can go up to 30 years, excuse me, 30%, but typically they're somewhere between 15 to 20%. These are non-recourse. They run with the lamb, not the property owner. So this is beneficial to the property owner that's looking for this assessment. It's not placed on their financial books, right? This is placed on the property. So if they want to reinvest into the community with those funds that would have been a debt instead of the assessment, then it allows them to use additional funds to improve other buildings within the community. This program does not accelerate, right? So if you, if for some reason a property goes into foreclosure, the assessment, the only thing that's due is the assessment that has the annual lien on it. If it goes into foreclosure, the assessment pauses and waits for a new property owner and then reengages. So there's, we don't foreclose on property owners, we just sit and wait for a new property, the property owner to come into the, into the assessment. Biggest part of this also is it decreases utility and maintenance costs. So if you have a property owner that has tenants or they want to improve their building to include new tenants, if you improve a property with these, then you can increase, excuse me, increase your tenant improvements and bring in new tenants. And again, this displaces higher cost mezzanine and equity capital. So if you flip to the next slide, this will show you kind of an overview of what that means. The typical capital stack includes senior debt, mezzanine debt and equity debt. And if you notice there, those rates and mezzanine debts typically range between 9% to 15%. And if they're able to use PACE, you can flip out that mezzanine debt, include PACE and typically reduce those rates 5% to 7% range. I will tell you, the market is changing right now. Kirsten Maylie will talk to this a little bit more on what their projects look at for the interest rates here. But this is a benefit to the property owner, especially in this marketplace where rates are rising, they can get cheaper capital at longer terms than a bank can provide them right now and they're not looking at the limits. So typically on a commercial pace loan, you're writing the term out to the full 20 years or 30 years. If you go through a commercial bank, typically you have a balloon, somewhere between year seven to 12, even if you have a 20-year term. So the last slide I just want to talk to you about is what are the benefits to you as the county or the local government here? It is a no-cost turnkey program that you guys would be adopting here. If people improve their properties, you increase your property values, you improve your building stock. Again, this is an economic development tool, so it promotes economic development, it does support energy reduction, sustainable policies, and also it stimulates the local job creation here in the county. So with that, the next slide kind of talks about next steps. We kind of went over that before, which indicates that you guys will be looking at a resolution for consideration of our district. And then if you guys decide you want to adopt, then we would go into an agreement with you through an inter-local agreement and that would be discussed with Jimmy from there. So I'll stop and see if you guys have any questions that I can answer for you about the program or I can bring up Kirsten to talk about the project, whatever you guys suggest.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Kirsten?
Hi.
Can I go into the rest?
Greetings, everyone. My name's Kirsten Beck. I am all the way from Colorado. Sorry, everyone, it's hockey fans. My address is 5750 Greenwood Village and that is Colorado 80111. And I am a consultant for JBS. I have assisted them on pace projects across the country and I want to reiterate what it is that Ryan's heard it with, PACE is an economic development tool. It is entirely why it is that we are here. We are looking at doing an $18.5 million combined heat and power facility at the plant here in Live Oak. This is very similar to a project that we've also done with PACE in Michigan and it has been an extremely successful project and promotion for them going forward as a company. It's a huge investment for them and one of the things that is really terrific about this program is that this allows this project to go forward. Truly, if PACE was not available, given how everything that Ryan was explaining about capital markets and also more importantly, how a large corporation like this works. Capital improvement budgets and projects are all on the list with every other plant that they have and they have over 150 plants across the country. The way that this project was able to be prioritized and able to move forward is because the fact that PACE allows this project to bring it to the plant level, right? So what that means is that the plan is the one who's paying for it because they're paying for it at the assessment. So they're going ahead and they're paying for the cost of the facility at the assessment level, which means that it is charged back to the plant, which then allows them the capital to go ahead and actually proceed with this project. Otherwise, it would be on the list of every other 150 plants and every other 150 capital projects that they have. So PACE is really for this purpose, this is how this project is going to get done. Why do you want this project to be done? It's a seven and a half megawatt installation facility. It allows them to ensure resiliency for their heat and energy sources. It also sets up a huge possibility and an opportunity for a PACE 2 project. And what that PACE 2 project allows them to do is they can also go ahead and capture CO2 emission, uh, CO, excuse, to create food-grade CO2. I didn't know much about this. It actually is a huge thing in the food industry. They need a large amount of CO2. That's one of their biggest uses that they use for each plant for all of the different processing that they need to do. This system allows them to process it themselves at food-grade level, at a safe level, and also at an economic level. And it will also allow them, when this system is installed, they can go ahead and also sell that CO2 at a food-grade level to others across the community. So it's a huge benefit that they would be making this almost $20 million investment. They would not be able to do it without PACE. That is the sole key here. That's why I flew out from Colorado, even though I will say I missed the game last night on my flight here. But you guys won, so it's okay. So if you have any questions for me, please let me know.
Anybody have a question?
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming along. Mr. Pruvet?
Gentlemen, what we're really asking you to do here is there had been an initial program that had been adopted back in 2015 and we became part of that Florida PACE, you know, program as part of that district. What we're asking, what they're asking is that the board would adopt a different, additional district to be part of this and this particular financing group. Like I said, there's four of them that are around the state. The other two haven't shown an interest up here yet to be able to do this. Like I said, it's not, it's not a new mechanism. We've been through this and have adopted, you know, one of the particular finance, financing arms, I'm not going to call it financing arms. And so what we would be doing here would be just allowing the citizens to have another opportunity with a different financing arm under the same, you know, pace-type program.
So do we need to?
There's a resolution that we need to adopt. They adopt, it's in your packet, the resolution essentially acknowledges the PACE program being allowable under the statutes and that Fred would be the one, would be the new district that we could become a part of. And then the resolution authorizes the chairman to go ahead and execute a limited purpose agreement to be become a partner within that particular district. Being a partner in the district, if you go through under the limited purpose, is just that, very limited. It gives you the right to be there and for all of them to be able to participate, but it does not put any liability upon the county, you know, for anything else that happens outside of our district, and I say district, outside of our county and outside of what our control was or how we participated, you know, in it. So I, so there is actually two things. One, to approve the resolution and two, to approve the limited purpose agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So you're saying that there's no difference between, there's no difference between just doing it another mechanism?
Yes, sir. If you recall, if you recall back in 2015, when all of this was initially happening around the state, there were other competitors that were out there that began in California and they came across to Texas and then to Florida and fought to be able to promote this particular financing. Back then, the first group that came in was the Florida PACE program and because they were the first one to be able to get here, they wanted to be able to have our area be an exclusive area. And at the time, we, y'all, the board was not favorable to have anybody be an exclusive anything. And so they wanted to come back with each of the various PACE programs that do approach so that you, there would be other opportunities for the citizens out here. So that's what we got into in 2015, a non-exclusive program, just like this program is a non-exclusive program. Typically, if you want to simplify it down, you know, it's like having two banks competing, you know, for the lending for these types of particular projects.
So you just need a motion to approve the resolution and another motion to approve limited purpose party membership?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion that we approve.
Commissioner Lynn?
Yes, sir. One more. Oh, Mr. Pruvet, I've been hearing you say there's no liability to us on this.
Yes, sir. Okay.
So I have a motion by Commissioner Flynn.
Second, aye?
Second by Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. I guess, did we do both motions?
Well, the resolution itself authorizes the chairman to sign the limited liability, I mean, the limited purpose agreement. If you would please, I would like to have another motion to approve the format of the limited purchase agreement.
That isn't a limited purchase, it's a limited purpose.
Limited purpose.
Party.
Limited purpose. Am I saying purchase?
Purpose.
Chairman?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Lynn. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you, guys. Thank you, y'all. Thank you very much. Item number 12, discussing possible board actions offered on surplus properties located on State Route 51. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, you've got the information on the offer in your packets. There's a 15.94 acre parcel and a 6.30 acre parcel. You have the offers and the combination of the two with the total compared to what the board had said previously. That $157,000, the net here with this offer will be $105,280. I gave you copies of the appraisal in case you want to take a look at those, but we just need direction from the board on what you want to do with these offers.
Any discussion, rejection, approval?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for permission plans by someone who's fairly knowledgeable in that part of the world. Seems to stay up with it, probably.
Um, yes, sir. Um, thank you for that. That is my district. I'm familiar with this property and I'll be honest with you, my stance on it is going to be the same as which I've been on my other parcels that we've offered surplus and I think that, it's my personal opinion, I think the market's falling, it's declining, recession is ongoing in front of us, bad degrees for rate increases that they've been handing out. The norm of mindset, that's your first or second offer is usually your best one. So I've glanced at these appraisals really quickly, I've just got copies of them, but I mean, if you combine them together and look at the total purchase price on the right, and I don't know if the public has this or not, but the combined purchase price is $112,000. And if you divide that by the 22 acres, which this is in its entirety, I know it's two parcels, but we have two separate appraisals, but the offer is on both. So if you divide the 112 by 22, you come out at $5,035. And I'm going to use the 16 acre, 15.94, 16 acre parcel appraisal, really y'all are looking at the same thing I'm talking about. We can praise, that 16 acres roughly, praise for $94,000. By my math, it's $58,97 an acre and the offer's $5,035 an acre. Um, there's a lot of floods on that property. I don't know about the percentage of it, but I know there's a lot of floods on there. If you're asking my two cents, I've been contacted. Moving on, we've got some expenses staring at us in the face. We've got a 4% increase on Blue Cross Blue Shield coming at us. We've got some land purchases that would be of higher economic development value to the county. I'm thinking of some other expenses that we have staring at us in the face when it comes flood to cycle and.
Grease oil?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, you've got the information on the offer. In fact, it's 15.9, a four-acre parcel and a 6.30-acre parcel. You have the offers and the combination of the two with the total compared to what the board had said previously. At $157,000, the net here with this offer will be $105,280. I gave you copies of the appraisal in case you want to take a look at those. We just need direction from the board on what you want to do with these offers.
Just now leaving.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask for permission plans by someone who's fairly knowledgeable in that part of the world. Seems to stay up with the property.
Um, yes, sir. Um, thank you for that. That is my district. I'm familiar with this property. And I'll be honest with you, my stance on it is going to be the same as which I've been on my other parcels that we've offered surplus. I think that, it's my personal opinion, I think the market's falling, it's declining, and recession is longer in front of us. Bad degrees of rate increases that they've been handing out. The norm of mindset, that's your first or second offer is usually your best one. So I've glanced at the appraisals really quickly. I've just got copies of them. But, I mean, if you combine them together and look at the total purchase price on the right, and I don't know if the public has this knowledge, but combined purchase price is $112,000. And if you divide that by the 22 acres, which this is in its entirety, I know it's two parcels, but we only have two separate appraisals, but the offer is on both. So if you divide the 112 by the 22, you come out at $5,035. And I'm only using the 16-acre, 15.9, 16-acre parcel appraisal. Really, y'all are looking at the same thing I'm talking about. The appraised, that 16 acres roughly appraised for $94,000. By my math, it's $58,97 an acre, and the offer's $5,035 an acre. There's a lot of floods on that property. I don't know about the percentage of it, but I know there's a lot of floods on there. If you're asking my two cents, I've been kind of vague. Moving on, we've got some expenses staring at us in the face. We've got a 4% increase on Blue Cross Blue Shield coming at us. We've got some land purchases that would be of higher economic development value to the county. I'm thinking of some other expenses that we have staring at us in the face when it comes to flood cycle and...
Grease oil.
I thought you said our...
Grease fuel.
Yeah, I mean, fuel prices, compression, minimum wage, I mean, all that stuff. I mean, nothing's going down except for what I feel like property value is probably in the next 12 to 24 months. So, Commissioner Statham, my two cents on it would be to accept this one, move on.
Well, that's pretty close to what we even set more than $112,000 the last time.
You went 50, 55, I think.
So...
I think we went 55. And yeah, this is a 22 in its entirety, but it appears that the offer's on both tracks. So all of it, I would, I would take it if it were mine, me, someone's mind. But the one question that I would ask Mr. Harris is that we don't have, for the public, we don't have the actual contract, but on the bottom there, the comments added, it states zoning and environmental restrictions. Do you know what the potential buyer, what they're...
I have no idea what that's about. You're right, we've got limited information because we're dealing with the realtor on these things, and I don't have any idea what it is.
But if we're talking about the numbers, I would be inclined to take it. Just on the numbers. As long as they're not asking for us to do some, something zoning that we couldn't do, that's why I wanted to ask him that question and what that meant.
I'm inclined to agree with you. Does anybody else have anything else?
Did we receive offer before this? This is the first one?
I think this is our first one.
This is the first one we've gotten?
I believe that it is. We had, we had, I think actually what we started with was we had...
The larger parcel?
The one. Yeah, we had the one, and then we combined them and put them back out there. Or we put both of them back out there together is what happened. In case someone wanted to do the offer on both. And this is what we have now. The appraised value came to $152,000 on the combination of the two. What the board had said before was $157,000, and the offer is $112,000.
You said, you said $152,000 on the, in its entirety?
It is. Correct, on the combination of the two. That's what the appraised value was.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's $6,800, and the offer's at $5,000. So I don't know the date of that appraisal, but I was being kind to say the property values have probably decreased a small percentage. I don't have the data, but that's just my speculation.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Flynn? What is the time frame you're looking at, 25 days?
We don't, we haven't set a deadline for ourselves if that's what your question is. Now, from the standpoint of the buyer, what it says is this is to be a cash purchase.
I would like to know, I heard Commissioner Lynn say that. I'm looking at it, it says the flood again, floods on and stuff like that. I would like to know whether the conditions, conditions, you know, limit before we step out. I would.
I didn't hear. Did he ask me a question?
I would tell Mr. Harris, I would like to know his, some information before.
Okay. I thought you asked me a question. I couldn't hear you.
I can obtain the information. I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that it's very likely this purchaser can worry about that and probably already knows what flood is on there because they're dealing with realtor. Interestingly, there is a comment down here that they have never seen the property.
Yes, I was just reading that.
Well, I mean, they have 21 days to inspect it. Would they also include it in here?
My thoughts, I, I think we take it and give them the 21 days. And if they don't take it, we'll put it back out and move again.
Um, Mr.?
Commissioner Flynn?
I mean, in my heart, I feel like it's a little loaded, but I want to respect Mr. Lynn's thoughts, and it's his district. And I think when it comes to companies such as this, they're the person that tells you most about their, their district. I completely understand your thoughts. So...
With that, do, I'll just, Mr. Chairman, I don't like, you know, the fact that we have to accept anything under a pretty vague community promoted. Thank you for that, I understand that. But I'm hearing what you're saying too, Mr. Brumman, the downturn and the things that are going on. Did we even get, before we combined the two, the pairs, the y'all, did we get any offers on it?
I think there was an offer on the original sample piece. And I believe the board rejected that. And then we ruled the other one, we're gonna hit, put them both out there.
I mean, no doubt we have some instances come out and some things that we stare at some things real soon. I would respect Commissioner Lynn's thoughts as well. It's his district.
With that, your motion to approve?
I would accept. I would just accept the offer on the contract.
Motion by Commissioner Lynn? Second by Commissioner Statham, all in favor, aye? All opposed, same sign? Aye, aye. Out of number 13, discuss the possible board action, determination of rates for fire protection and solid waste assessment programs for fiscal year 2022 to 2023.
Did you say determination or termination of rates?
Determination.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, at this point, based on an evaluation of preliminary budgets, we have gone into a budget workshop. Right now, there's, the recommendation is that we stick with the assessments that we currently have, the current rates, which is 120 on fire protection and 225 on solid waste.
Any discussion? Commissioner Lynn?
Um, not really discussion, I'd just like to make a comment for the, for the public. You know, I know this board, you know, we, we, there was a, there was a a long, lengthy meeting at the Coliseum last year about solid waste, and this board was looking down the barrel, a lot of guns looking at us. It was a tough decision for us, us to make. And, you know, I know that this week the decals went out. And that's been a hot topic, I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm sure that the public sitting out there have had their experiences with the decals too. I'd just like to reiterate again, while we went to the decals, and that is to try to reduce the tonnage that our county residents are not responsible for. And by us reducing that tonnage, allows us to lower our expenses. And if we lower our expenses, that allows us to keep the taxes the same or not go up on the assessment. So I know it's a pain. I know the process that we did isn't perfect. It's the first time we've done it in years and years, Mr. Harris. And it's a learning curve for all of us, you know, none of us are perfect. And it was our first attempt. And we're, we're hearing it about decals and how frustrating it is for folks, but we're also hearing it from the other side, folks saying, hey, you ran out a lot of money on this at one time, and you haven't done anything to help you, ain't do anything. So...
Figure out why.
To figure out why, you know, you know, you know, while we are working on it, we're talking to other land bills and doing other stuff, which we discussed at our public workshop. The decals is, was one avenue for us to, to, to reduce tonnage on the volume that our taxpayers aren't responsible for, you know, so...
Mr. Chairman, I think you guys probably have had the same conversation I have with some of our tenants of those questions. So just the talk of it, just the letter going out does reduce the amount of trash and trash that is being brought into those sites. So, I mean, hopefully this is, it's a lot of fixing off of this.
Yeah, I mean, they, you know, for the folks up there that are just a little frustrated about it and just hate the idea and it's terrible, you know, I'm sorry. But, you know, it was, it's, it's a step that we had to take to try to, to try to reduce the expenses to try to keep this assessment the same. I'm bound to leave them like they are. I think that we need to wait and see what the decals do to our tonnage, um, guys and, and Mr. Harris, and, and see how it shakes out. But I just wanted to say that to the public because that's been a hot topic this week because the decals went out, and 220 is what's the effective date that everyone had to have. And I know that all of us have probably had those calls. And that's why we did it for the ones, you know, that, I don't know why we did that. That's all I think so.
And Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, for the public, how do you talk about the decals? I'll put it back on stairs. Who, who should the folks contact if they've had a lost decal? There's some discussions, some folks in this place haven't received. What's the process?
Dial 1-800-Commissioner.
Yeah. They, they are.
He'll answer his phone just after we end that.
They are.
No, call the county administration office or the county building department. We prefer to call the county administration office first because there's so many different circumstances and reasons why some people do not have them. Some people have purchased a new home recently, or maybe that letter went to the previous summer. We've got other people who are either just finished building a new house or in the process, and maybe they, they are of the assessment. So they need to call the county administration office. And everyone, everyone at the county administration office can help them and has been helping the last three weeks. I do want to say this. I know that we've dealt with a few people that are genuinely frustrated with process. We have had a few people who have complained in fact and even asked or said, made statements about time. You know, the people that had complained for years because they saw citizens driving in here from surrounding counties using our collection sites. We've even had commercial business vehicles come in advertising the county where they were from, dumping their waste in our collection sites. And clearly, the net effect of that is that the local resident of Swanee County had to pay to get rid of that waste for those people that live outside of this county and businesses that are outside of this county. So shortly after the beginning of this current fiscal year, we made some changes on the commercial tipping fee side. That made it, had an effect on the volume itself, which is a good thing. So we knew that the volumes were coming down, but we also anticipated that when these decals actually began being used, that you could see additional reductions in the volume. That's a real good thing. But right now, it looks like, even with the numbers that we programmed in for increases in fuel or associated with the disposal, that we should be okay at this assessment rate right now because of some of those reductions in volume.
Well, by the same token, we've also been, I don't know if you want to say cleaning up the tax rolls or whatever, there's been...
A lot of them.
A lot of it's had to be corrected in this process. And I, I agree with Commissioner Lynn. I know that the sticker thing probably wasn't getting off just as smooth as we hoped it would, but we'll get better with it. So just bear with us, Mr. Chairman, we'll have to pay you off some money. Do you need a motion on that, or is that for the, keep the rates assigned?
Well, no. No, those will actually be set later. You can turn this information over to our council on that. They'll put the resolutions together, they'll come back at a later date.
And you got consensus on this?
That's all I really have.
Just need consensus from the board? Everybody, we're good. Number 14, discuss the possibility of the city of Live Oak sharing the council an additional employee to work on grants. Mr. Harris?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I know you, Mr. Chairman, had participated in agreement that what I'll again state was very encouraging to you that we had with some representatives of the city regarding a number of things, including utilities, writing grants, trying to figure out how the city of Live Oak gets some assistance with failing infrastructure. And during the conversation, we talked about the possibility of sharing the council an additional employee to work on grants. Now, I want to separate this for a second from the idea of using consultants to help us apply for grants. We've had some very good conversations with some companies that do that. One of them was here in our, in our most recent meeting and made a presentation. I'm confident that there are some firms out there that can help us with state grants, those who have a presence in Tallahassee that can help walk the halls and keep track of the grant applications that we've made. But in addition to that, there are firms that specialize in federal grants, which we also use frequently. So I think it's important that we make the distinction here in the services that can be rendered quite effectively by these consultant firms. And I think those are some of the things they can do. Outside of that, a lot of consultant firms offer third-party administration. An example of that is Fox Enterprises that we use right now. Third-party administration is very often a requirement on grants, particularly federal grants, sometimes not so much on state grants. But the overwhelming majority of the work is actually occurring out there in the administration office. Shannon and I work on these grants very closely. We've got some other staff in the field that works on some of this information, but it is extremely time consuming. I don't have any reason to believe that we could consider helping the city of Live Oak with any grants if we didn't have additional personnel. Now, that isn't what's really driving this. What's driving this is the busyness. I've been in meetings with you, Mr. Chairman, with businesses, with Commissioner Hale, with businesses. I've been to the economic development offices, talked to a number of businesses. And right now, we've got a lot of interest in the county, and it's going to take a lot of grants to help us get where we need to be with the infrastructure that we most necessary in order to serve some of these companies. So we have grant applications out right now. By the way, a quick update, we had a phone call today from the state regarding a request for some additional information. Shannon took that phone call. I think I was out, Commissioner Hale, with you, trying to get out there and look at the properties associated with this one business. But in any event, they needed some additional information. It was a very encouraging call. He was able to respond to their questions, give them what they needed, and they indicated. And this was on a $2 million request that's associated with infrastructure. So I think we turned that application in two weeks ago, probably. So it hasn't been long. And I had a phone call yesterday, actually had a phone call Friday, and actually spoke with another grant agency in Tallahassee, NDEO, regarding a different source of funding to another grant opportunity. But again, this is the purpose, is trying to obtain more funding for water and sewer infrastructure at this time. So we're getting the phone calls back to these grant administrators, very encouraging phone calls. And we know that, for I'm confident, I'm never the optimist, I'd say I'm confident that the money's going to be coming, and we have got to have more help in that office to manage these grants and the day-to-day busyness associated with grants. So an additional person could help us do that. And it might also provide an opportunity then for us to find some grants that would be suitable for the city of Live Oak to help with some of their failing infrastructure. I've said this many times over the years, I may not have said it in recent years, but we could spend a lot of time and energy trying to develop the county, but as we bring the city along with us in some form, we're failing because it's the centerpiece of the county. I know the chairman believes that Bramford is the centerpiece of the county, but, but we love rent too. In any event, we, we need, we really need for the city to prosper and be in good health. And they aren't. They've got major infrastructure problems. They know they do, we know they do, and they need some help. So the board has an interest, and we don't know if the city has the ability to participate in this expense. But I wanted to bring it to your attention and see if they're in comments, board members, as we continue conversations.
Any other wish on the panel there? Yeah? Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Flynn? Mr. Manley's sitting out there. I, we tried to ask him to give it to the city, and it never worked. I know, I know that was in the past, and I just gotta say what I, it never worked. Always fails. The first guy, another director, he paid, so they could have, the city was going to have. And the city got the ball. And the city got involved in that. I would like to see the city working with the county. I'm not going to say that it's impossible, it's just that they won't, they didn't do it. I think, I don't know if financial, how they sit right now, but I know what the previous things were, never, never worked. We tried, Harris and City, it worked. I'm willing to try. I know what the previous things were, they have never worked. Even with other things, the road, never, never materialized, but we tried.
Mr. Plumb? The one thing I took away from that is, Mr. Plumb's been here a long time. He's seen a lot of things. But the one thing I did hear him say, is he's willing to work, give it a try. And at the end of the day, that's what, that's what it's about. He's been here three terms, that's a lot of time to be here, a lot of changes went on. I do feel, I've been involved with city business and doing business through different things and different people that's been in the city, and I've seen, I've truly seen a change in that. So I want to speak to that and speak out for what I see. So I think there's opportunity there, I do. I think at times when you have change and turnover and leadership changes, that it's worth revisiting. And I'm truly, I respect the road that you've traveled, and it's been difficult, I understand that. But the one thing we've got to do for the people, and that's the people of the city and the county, we can't, we can't ever give up on it. Long way to go, and that's, that's what I took. So I, I would like to try to move forward with what we can, and let's see if it makes a difference here. I've had the opportunity to do that.
Mr. Will?
Yes, sir. I, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I'm kind of torn here. I also appreciate what Mr. Plumb had to say, he's been here a lot longer than I have, experienced a lot, you know, as he warned me of when I went down there and made an attempt to try to work with the city. This is, my name didn't discourage this dive against the city whatsoever, but my position on it is, is I want to work with the city. Honestly, I just want to work a little in a different manner than a full-time employee. And what I mean by that is, is I want to double down on the firms that chase the money, that have the boots on their ground in Tallahassee to get us the money. And if they get us the money by them writing the grants, and then we need to discuss hiring someone, partnering, we can joint their platform, we can, you know, that those guys charge fees, if we need to help them on the fee, and do a partnership on the application, by all means, I mean, the county prospers, if the city prospers, vice versa, I agree with Mr. Harris on that. Historically, the city and county haven't worked too well together. I think that, there again, back to my comments, the feds raising rates, and I don't know that right now adding staff at sixty, eighty thousand dollars, adding a position without that grant can, that they're going to have to manage at the right time. I'd better just double down on the money beside them at the expense and chase the grants and go get them. And once we get them, I mean, there's avenues in those grants, I mean, that they, they charge a fee. I believe the lady that was here last Saturday, that was, we said, one percent to write it and up to five percent to administer. I mean, that's money you never had, so you're not, it's not, it's not out of pocket, it's not, it's not continuing, it's not, you know, it has a salary and benefits and all that stuff that comes along. And it's nothing against the employer, staff, or anyone like that, don't take it like that, I'm just speaking about current economic conditions. And like I said, the worst of, every analyst on TV predicts a likely Republican victory in November. Whether they're right or wrong, I don't know, but that's what they predict. And with that said, the analysts all say that these loans are going to slow down as far as grants and all this infrastructure movement is coming. And I agree a thousand percent, we need to chase every single one of them, because if we don't, someone in the city, someone else is, I just want to double down on the, on the chasing. And that's the firm that has the relationships, whether it be Tallahassee or Washington, to chase them. They chase them, we pay them what money we never had, we get them, and we need to help administer them, yeah, let's partner up and hire somebody. That's just my two cents. It's a little bit different from the board's, but I don't, you know, I'm not, I'm not jumping up and down disagreeing against you guys whatsoever. I'm a little indifferent, like I said when I started, I'm a little torn, I'm just leaning toward the side of doubling down on the, on the private firm, chase the money before it dies off. Let's get it, and then let's hire somebody to manage it.
Mr. Chairman.
Just, I'm new to the board, Mr. Harris.
I, I agree with hiring firms to help chase the money, but there's some of this money that we are chasing, that we don't even pay anyone to chase. The Florida Growth, Jobs Growth Grant, we didn't pay anyone to go after that. And I'm feeling that there's a good chance we're going to be awarded that. The other agency that I spoke to yesterday, I had picked up the phone myself and called them about that money. I feel pretty good about that as well. Now, they may not get awarded, and I can't guarantee anything right now, but there are plenty of these that we just apply, put the information together. What I want to share, though, is that there is a distinction between the day-to-day work that goes on managing a grant and third-party administration. What I heard, and I listened to those people that came and spoke, really nice people, but when I look at what they actually perform, it looks to me a lot like third-party administration, which is what Fox Enterprises does. In fact, one of the speakers even said that they will complement these staff, and if they thought if we were so small that we had someone in finance that manages all the day-to-day stuff, they would complement that. That's third-party administration. That's checking off, some of the words they use were checking the task to ensure that the task is done that the grant requires, trying to ensure that we are in compliance with grants. And we have to have third-party administrators when they're required. So I'd agree that we need to do that, and I think some of these firms can do that. In addition to Fox, if we need someone additional. But when it comes to the day-to-day work that actually occurs, I'm not convinced that they actually produce that type of work. I think that you're still going to rely on county staff to handle that type of work. But I think right now, we chase all the grants we chase, and if we need to hire some more people to help us do that, the ones that we can't fill out ourselves, then let's go ahead and do it.
I don't disagree with anything Mr. Harris said. Other than if we're going to hire somebody, I think that before we dive off in that expenditure, I mean, I was at the meeting the other night at City Hall too, and they were struggling with the answer on where's, where's the money going to come from? And like we talked about in that offer, I mean, we, we got a lot of stuff that we've committed to already, land purchases, insurance hikes, fuel hikes, and this is going to be a tough budget workshop. And, you know, if the board wants to hire one, then, you know, maybe we hire them, but I, I don't know that waiting until a budget workshop to see how the budget looks at the time would maybe not be a bad idea to wait and make sure that the fund is there before we commit the day.
I agree. To, to, to that area there.
I would agree with that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to add, I mean, I don't know what capacity this employee does, whether it be through that agency or us hiring someone. Basically, what really determines is the city of Live Oak wants to partner with, and how much their loan spends. But one thing I did take from that lady that came and spoke to us, because I wrote it down, she said that partnering with the city on grants is a big plus. So that's something I don't want us to lose sight of or forgive, or, there's things we can do with that, so I want to take the full advantage of that. Absolutely, she made a good point of that. But I guess at this point, it was just a consensus that we wanted, but we don't know, like I say, what capacity, or, they own the city. Maybe if we do that, we might be.
Well, I'm kind of.
Intelligent discussion, I guess.
I'm kind of like Mr. Landau, I don't see what harm in waiting till we get to the budget workshop, decide this, maybe the city knows what they want to do at that point, and we can move forward with that, and know where I stand, I don't put on the gas, I'm all I can, so I'm all over there, but if that's what it takes, so.
But I do want to, I absolutely agree with Mr. Flum, and Mr. Say, but I, I know that relationship, we've all heard of the stories and the horse stories, and if we can build on that and be better about that as our board and their board, we want to follow that. Absolutely.
Yeah, I do too.
And I'm, I listen to it quite a lot for workshops, but if we have more discussion, I would just like to try to continue to keep it going and have that discussion.
Anyway, with that, I can, I'll just wait till the workshop.
Yeah, let me just say, if everyone agrees, we're still going to keep, I think you said, keep foot on the pedal on these grants.
Yes.
We're keeping the foot on the pedal. And I may come back to you soon regarding one of these agencies. I saw what you sent me, Mr. Chairman, and we're going to try to come back to something soon, because I think we should go ahead, not on the third-party administration side, but on the applying for some of these grants. We just need to identify some and see if we can turn some of these people loose to try to help us procure some of these additional grants. So we'll be bringing that back to you soon, so we can do that.
With that being said, we'll move on to number fifteen, discuss capital improvement plan, Mr. Harris.
This is, what I will submit is a partial list. And I thought lots of additional things we could put on this list, but I wanted to share this with you for now. Is Mr. Meeks here? I don't believe he is, but in any event, he and I had a conversation about the comprehensive plan and the capital improvement element in that plan. If we put our capital improvement plan and our comp plan, then we're supposed to be able to, our plan should be to fund those projects within five years. I'll submit to you that everything that you see on here is going to take more than five years, quite a bit more than five years. But in any event, this is a, what I will call a partial list. If board members want to just take this and take a look at it, forward to the office, any additional projects that you think need to be considered in capital improvement plan. If we get to the point where we're going to consider putting them in the capital improvement plan, we'll need to have an idea of cost. Now, there are a few of these that I have a projected cost on, and in fact, they'd be out there into the catalyst site area. There's about eleven million dollars worth of water and sewer that needs to occur out there, and that doesn't even cover all of those things listed under catalyst site in the area. That's just an extension of the water transmission lines and constructing a wastewater plant and the collection lines for that, and bringing those lines back to this side of I-ten. And then we're working on trying to come up with some information on North 129 Utilities. One of the phone calls I had in Tallahassee the other day was pertaining to the sixty-eighth terrace east of 129 regarding utilities, wastewater lift station in a forced name. And then some other things that I've mentioned in a previous meeting regarding widening the overpasses on I-75 and I-10 and putting some turn lanes in out there. I think Mr. Norris and, I don't know which commissioners, had listened to a gentleman's speech about the need to widen 137 with this truck traffic that would be involved with commercial development out there in I-10 and Canoe Road 137. So that's one thing that we need to consider. I mean, so far, thankfully, we haven't had some of the problems that occur in many of your more developed counties with a lot of heavy volume on your roads, we haven't had a lot of transportation currency problems, which means you have too many daily vehicle trips and you overload your road network. Our bigger problems is that some of our roads started out as dig trails fifty years ago, and then they turned into, in many cases, substandard roads and ultimately got paved, and some of them are really narrow and in many cases falling apart. So that's why we're going to need to fix some of our large arterial collector roads in areas where we're going to consider commercial and industrial development, think about what it's going to take to improve those road networks. Another example of that would be out at ninety on the other side of I-10, we had to extend that four-lane section. We're building catalyst sites, so we got the money from DOT to do that in that particular case. And then, Mr. Scott, the next twenty-five pages are items that Mr. Scott turned in.
He's got more.
He's got just under five hundred million dollars worth of parks improvements, and I think he said he's got more coming.
He said he went for prayers.
He's got quite a list, and it's a good list. I mean, honestly, if you read through there, some of these items are items that we've talked about in the past. And in any event, at some point, we'll have to put numbers to all of these, and then any additional items that the board wants to consider putting on the capital improvement list, and then with numbers at some point, the commission can prioritize. Now, I recognize, as I'm sure commissioners, you recognize it, priorities often change. Some of the meetings that we've had with business representatives in the last forty-five days have really driven home the fact that we need to look closely at some specific areas right now to see if we can get some of the infrastructure in there. So just keep that in mind, even, even if we put the numbers to these, and the board eventually prioritizes, we'll go into that and we'll stay that sometimes priorities have to change.
With that being said, there's just one thing I'd like to say, added to this whole thing is a bypass. At some point, I know it may not be in the next five years, but I'd like to see it added. I mean, it's going to be a problem one day, I just don't know, you know, how long it's going to be, it can be pretty quick, it could take ten or fifteen years, but looking forward, that's just where I see it's going to be a big issue. What do you get going through town now? On Friday, take thirty minutes to get one into town to another, so that's just my thoughts on it. Where the rest of the commissioners are? It's her.
I attended a workshop over in Tonnee County on bypass, and it was a guy from Solutions, didn't name it, but he had his card, he had come through, and I brought it in, and to discuss, we were just talking about it, but we know, the DOT, that a bypass would work downtown Valley. And he told me if you were to, a bridge at the bay of San Francisco, you'd get a bypass. Yeah, and I smiled and said, but I said, you're right, you're absolutely right. I said, but we, we're going to need one at some point. It won't be my call, it'll be up to the two gentlemen that, one of the two gentlemen that sit out there, that if they get behind the wheel and ride it, I think I do have his card, the gentleman's card, I met him over there, and said, as I said, with DOT, and he said, he stayed there, he was with bypass downtown Valley. He just needed that, he said, he told me different locations, that he went on Google, and he was saying, here, there, here, you know, tell me where you put that. I said, well, sure, we can put it downtown.
Well, I'm not playing it, see, like we got, I just think it needs to be on the radar. That's where I'm going with this. That's on there.
Mr. Harris. Maybe mistaken, Mr. Harris, wasn't there some talk one time about bypass being on the west side?
There's, there's, that's a discussion, I hesitate to say it all up right now.
It was, yeah.
But I've got a map that I drew about ten years ago that has a bypass ready. And someone leaked that into the community one time, and it caused some interest. So when the time is right, we'll have some conversation about it. That map I saw, so we had it.
Jordan Schubert. It only helps do it before.
I'm just, I'm just putting it out there, I just think it would be on the radar where we put it, how we do it, I'm going to, at some future point, but I'd just like to see it mentioned in that in case, you know, the grant money gets real good, and there's a possibility of moving forward that at some point. I'd like to be able to have it on there so we can address it.
Mr. Chairman. Um, and I don't know what qualifies a capital improvement plan or not, but I can take one up to the top of the list, Mr. Harris, and that's another area commissioner for his hand.
Just turn it on.
I'm on that one there, what? Those two, they've been, they were started in seventy-six and they're about, I had to share my jacket, it's seventy-eight.
I thought I was.
I'm listening to that Coliseum has.
Oh, so you.
But a couple of them on a serious note, and I know that we're not here to start this list, but it's just discussion purposes, but I don't, and I don't know if this is I'm out of turn for speaking or not, but I'm like a bypass road idea. I think that we're asking for money. I know the sheriff's here. He's gonna need a new jail at some point. I mean, I don't know if that's on us or that's on him. And then also, um,
I can answer that question.
And the property property building. I mean, anytime you gotta get your cab or anything, just hour and a half late, they got six, six windows. I mean, they, it's not their fault. I mean, it's just, they got lots of people pulling in there.
All I have a good idea on a place to pick is that one.
Anyway, those are just two. That's just discussion. That's not another series of control, no doubt. I don't want that out of turn and not our responsibility.
Yeah, maybe I'm right. Anybody else? Mr. Harris, we're good with that?
Yes, sir. We'll revisit this at some point, but we'll start putting numbers on some of these things.
Item sixteen, additional agenda items.
We have some of those.
Item number one, approval of members of the citizens advisory task force for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. That's for the CDPG project cycle. And I just, we just need a motion for approval of that list. Motion by Mr. Fleming, second by Mr. Stapleton, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries by a vote. Item number two, approval of change toward three with music construction incorporated in the amount of thirty-eight thousand seven hundred ninety-eight dollars for work associated with county one thirty-six and I-seventy-five wastewater treatment plant. Budge impact funding the grant proceeds. Mr. Harris?
That's just another pump. Um, I would call the lift station with its modification that actually takes this way of the money. I think the first number was over sixty thousand dollars. So, um, this one came in at thirty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty and it's needed in order to make the sewage part of that system out there.
Offer motion by Commissioner Stapleton, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries by a vote. Item number three, approval of amendment number three to DEP grant number LPC, LP six ten forty to extend completion date of project closeout processing for I-seventy-five county road one thirty-six way wastewater treatment facility. Budge impact none. Mr. Harris?
I don't believe I can add anything. That is an extension of time.
Any, any conversation or motion for approval, move there. Motion by Commissioner Hanel, second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. With that. We'll give a public comment. Anybody wishing to speak?
Name in the address for where? That's ninety-one ninety-four hundred thirty second terrace. Gentlemen, I'd like to speak to you tonight. I'm just wishing, I'm speaking for myself. I'm just wishing to raise, I get power of awareness or sensitivity or planning. I don't like reactive planning. It's scary to me. The kids is in all kinds, and I don't need to, I need nationally aware. It's, and especially. I've heard a number of times and I agree thoroughly that infrastructure is the heartbeat of development. And I agree with that. But our country is looking at a hard time. We're looking at eight plus percent inflation, uh, which Congress tells costs the average average family with forty thousand dollar income, five thousand dollars and more this next year. We're looking at rising over the crime rates, maybe a straight gain. We're looking at power outage. It's scary to me. So, kind of fall back. Troy Gowdy said something in December of last year. He was the congressman from South Carolina. He was in a discussion. And his response was, after all, isn't public safety a pretty imminent function of government? And I just want to put that part of you discussing very complex and possibly tactical things, but going back to basics, perhaps a prudent function of government is public safety. I mean, you think about it. Um, what's, what's happening with our future means and where are we going? I spoke to a number of people. Um, regarding teaching planning and where we're going to go around. I think we have done good. We have upgraded the communications equipment, and that's a huge plus. That helps protect all of us and it also helps protect law enforcement officers who might be isolated in some situations. Um, the salary increase, as I understand it, um, that'll affect shorting for county deputies will be raised to forty-five thousand dollars. Starting base. In contrast, the FHP, our higher control, their starting will be fifty thousand dollars. I'm a little concerned about us being a training ground for FHP internally. We need to keep good senior staff. I just recommend that to you. Please consider that issue. Um, fuel costs, I think you already mentioned that tonight. Uh, they're gonna be horrible with that. Counties up, up country, they're saying we can't put deputies on the road and call in. Uh, I've heard that, uh, equipment, vehicle maintenance, vehicle cost, replacement cost are frequently non-negotiables. You either think what they're asking or you don't get it. It's kind of a really tight situation. Um, I don't know. I, I've been around a few years and I'm looking around and the disrespect for law enforcement that has been so I don't know what word is pervasive in this country, the defund the police and all the other stuff. Uh, we've got to turn that around. We, we have got to respect and do whatever we need to do with that. I am personally concerned about gangs. I have seen groups of people here and in Lexi that are armed, the way they were conducting themselves in the public. So we, we got that to look at. Um, in really absence of public safety, there's gonna be fewer people moving into any area that has high crime rates. And that meets with your overall environment. I want to keep the county safe. I want to be proactive in your planning and your strategic planning and your cooperation planning. To address these types of issues, just keep our community safe. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, Mr. Harris. Anyone else wishing to speak? Name in the address for where?
Moses Tucker, one four five eight one hundred second path. I would, if you're backing on, backing on, Jim was talking, I hadn't fallen in that direction. I, I find it very safe here. I, I came from Saint John's County and the crime rate is much more hidden there, but it's much higher here. I, I feel like our, uh, law enforcement does find a job. Uh, you can take on and get coached regularly and I see them catching bad guys all the time, you know? I feel pretty secure here. My neighborhood has never even had a property crime committed. So something must be going right. I know that meth, meth and drugs, all, that's all over everywhere. It seems to be under control here. I'm not arguing with a gentleman, uh, and I'm not opposed to paying our law enforcement deputies, especially, uh, competitive wage, you know, to keep them here too. I, I, I've seen that training ground thing go on. I think very good. Well, I come up, I got a question. Please somebody answer me. On that, uh, the grant writing people, uh, that came and they wanted to write managed, uh, traffic standards, talk about that. Am I wrong, uh, understanding that that one percent that they're asking to write, uh, write that is a non-refundable? That's out of our pocket. Am I correct?
Yes. Well, and she said that was negotiable.
The one percent.
More questionable, yes.
I don't remember recall that. I remember the five percent, but.
She said depending on the size.
Depending on the size of the grant and if you, if she writes it and she doesn't get it, then that, that one percent's negotiable. If she gets the grant, then it's one percent.
Okay, but all right. Let's assume though, it's a sixty million dollar, somewhere, somewhere it was referred to sixty million dollars, right? A sixty thousand dollar. You, you yourself, uh, Mr. Chairman, said, said about, uh, getting someone to assist in grant writing would be sixty eight. The way I'm looking at it, man, and, and I think it would be a mistake to specifically hire that person to exclusively, uh, make their job, uh, description only grant writing. It sounds like, and I know, uh, no hit on anybody anywhere on this, but who's to say that that person, if they come on as grant writer? And I don't know how, I ain't suggesting to, to direct y'all, but it might free Chinna to do something that he's qualified to do and other departments of the county. Uh, have, maybe have that new hire, if we've got one specifically for that, hopefully very experienced new hire. And, and would allow him to do, or whoever else normally does that, more expanded, uh, duties or opportunities work. I just think if we're gonna gamble once again, and I'm, I'm stock market, uh, I, I do different things way through with my money, but I wouldn't go with this. I would go gambling, throwing a sixty thousand out there, hoping we might get it by written, uh, and that's what that company does. They make their money kind of like a stockbroker, you know? So I, I'm just, I see, and I'm arguing, just food for thought, stimulate thought. I see a good investment in, in hiring a full-time employee. If y'all do a, uh, evaluation, it can justify it anyway. I think the money, sixty grand, much, seventy grand, much better spent. Now, we're talking about one sixty million dollar grant. If there are multiples, we attempt. And if we only get one, boom, we won, you know? So.
Well, okay, and let me, let me answer that a little bit before you go on. It's not just about hiring a person here at the county. I, I, I don't disagree that they probably don't need some help if a bunch of grants came in and they had to be administered. That's a whole separate thing. But that one percent that you're gonna pay or, or whoever you might pay to write that grant, they not only come with grant writing abilities, but they come with people they know.
Well, Mr. Chairman, what I was gonna say to that is Mr. Clever, that, that what I took from not just that lady's reputation, but several of those, I think we've had probably three firms now that have spoken in regards to that. Um, I don't gamble either. I don't buy a lot of tickets and money to that. And I, so you know, your reference of gambling on one percent on sixty thousand dollars for one grant application. They know, they know our chances of getting that grant before they write it is what I took from it. So in other words, what I don't think that the board, or at least I didn't take from it, that we're gonna go say, hey, we want you to go write these six grants and they total five hundred million dollars and here's your check. You know, I'm not doing that. I agree with you. No, no, we're not doing that. I'm not gonna gamble like that either. I think that you say, hey, we need a wastewater treatment plant at our catalyst site. What avenues can we, how, what avenues of grants can we get there with? And then they explore that and they say, well, there's this one, there's this one, and there's this one. If you combine them, got them all, it would get you enough to build the plant. Let me do some research to see what I think about us getting those. And then they come back to you and say, you won't get this one, but you could probably get these two based on your population, your county size, whatever it is, your financials, and then you pay them a percentage and they go right. And then we still, there's no guarantee. It's not, it's not, yeah, you, before you write, you're gonna get it. I don't, I didn't take that from it at all. That's kind of how I understood it. Anybody correct me if I'm wrong, but that's kind of how I.
I mean, I remember asking her, just kind of, I think what you're saying, I was asking her about the scope of the grant or the size of the grant, was that a flexible thing? I think she did say at that point in time. But saying what you're saying, listen, they're gonna write for a sixty million dollar grant. We gotta pay them one percent, and that's fine. They're aggressive to get that and want to do that, but I mean, there may be, I think, the rest of what you're saying, some of the things, I think, as Harris said earlier, some of these grants will go after, they only get two hundred bucks or two hundred feet. So how hungry is that person gonna be to chase that? But we've got someone working on our behalf to see if they have full time to get those grants. I mean, it's definitely a discussion to have.
I think it's gonna be a combination of the above is where I'm, of that opinion. I'm not saying I'm right or wrong. I'm just saying, and all the people I've talked to and all the stuff I've been chasing down on all this, there's advantages to both.
My argument still is that firm is out of money, like all firms, and, and they're, they're not exclusive of our employees. This, this grant writer would be exclusively ours, right? So absolutely good looking, our best interest. They may have multiple, uh, uh, communities that, that are buying for the same money, and where do we take priority of that, you know? So anyway, just food for thought. Y'all's thing. See, uh, going to that, that, uh, garbage decal. I, I, I get on, I don't know if y'all do. If you don't get on there, then, uh, then on Facebook, different sites, you could, uh, get input from talking to town around or talk of the county and all. I, I heard some complaining, uh, and mostly of, in my opinion, stems from veterans. They're just unaware. Uh, they complain about the fifty dollar replacement fee. I think that's too low personally, because I know some folks do some weird things at ten bucks, you know? So, so if they, they can take and, and start selling that, um, decal, you know, uh, for fifty bucks a piece, that could be happening, you know? You know, so I wouldn't have a problem at all making it two hundred and twenty-five dollars, you know? The, I, I got two of them in the mail. Uh, now they're, they could be stolen, I guess, you know, but I usually have other things in my vehicle. I don't want stolen. More, more value than I stick it. So I love my property, you know, and, uh, odds of them getting stolen, so the, uh, when you listen to the talk on those roofs, you know, you see that they're just not paying attention to what's going on, why y'all doing, which Glenn described why. It is, but most, a lot of them don't hear that, you know? So, uh, I, I don't have a problem. I don't, I don't think y'all should back off that fifty dollars.
Would you mind telling them for us?
Sir?
Would you mind telling them for us?
I have to give them your show money. And the only, uh, concern I have, I don't believe anybody would go in and force, maybe I'm wrong. There may be one or two uh, out of the forty-four thousand in this county that would force themselves to be able to dump. I understand, uh, recently that there's not really a, uh, a penalty that I'm aware of other maybe the five hundred dollar thing. I don't know if that's what it is. But I think that might be, uh, need to be published, uh, so the community would know what the penalty is, if you was to go in there and the tenant tells you not to dump, you did dump, what that penalty would be. Uh, I hear that, that, that the tenant is supposed to just record or take a picture of the tags and not do any more other than tell them. I get that. Uh, hopefully, if, if that happens, the sheriff will go out and give them a, a, a fine or whatever. But I'm understanding there's not something set up for that. I think we probably need that on that. And, um, let's see. Oh, and the, uh, we was talking about the cap, uh, the, uh, capital improvement plan. I don't know if fixing roads could be a part of that, or is it, that's separate. Fixing roads compared to building roads or expanding roads? Are they separate?
I'll take the stand of that. Um, fixing roads is something that we try to do every year and it depends on the type of road, but there's, DOT has a program that we can apply for, um, road improvements, repairs, reconstruction is really what that money goes for. They've got a couple of primary programs that we apply for every year. Uh, commissioners participate in that. Ten years ago, we could turn in five projects for reconstruction of roads, widening roads, and we could get them approved. And once they were approved, they went on, on the DOT's five-year transportation improvement plan. So it took five years for us to get the funding to do those things that they approved. Back a number of years ago, they changed that. Um, and I think it was after they started incorporating all the smaller municipalities and allowing them to apply to the same, from the same pot of funding that the counties had. Um, they took in. Um, they took in more applications from more local governments, but they didn't decrease the funding. So, the number of projects that each county could get approved then would reduce, sometimes two or three projects, but it still goes on a five-year transportation improvement plan. In addition to that, um, the commissioners a few years ago finally agreed that we start doing some chip seal roads, which was a big improvement. Uh, what we've done is tried to eliminate a lot of roads, so that anytime you do a chip seal road, you free up the graders to spend more time on the balance of the unpaid roads that are still out there. I think you said one time, that's, we're on one hundred and sixty-year plan, to chip seal all of the current unpaid roads. But so far as the capital improvement plan, what I was referring to was these large, major improvements that DOT would have to get into their plan, it would be separate part from our, our typical applications. For, of this, and particularly this would be state uh, facilities that they would be improving. So, when you look for opportunities for capital improvements on some of these state facilities and start working with DOT, I'm trying to get some of those approved, and I think there should be a capital improvement plan.
Well, can you answer my question, they just submitted the roads really need resurfacing, repair, you know?
Right.
The uh, and the, the other thing was uh, I didn't, at the workshop, didn't hear nobody talking about chemical plants, so. And so, just, just.
I'm gonna put you on the timer. Sorry, I'm gonna put you on the timer now.
Okay. And, and uh, I, I wanna really thank Mr. Fleming tonight, he brought out some historical uh, work with the city, and, and I think that's why the old dogs need to be around sometimes to, to remind. And, and uh, well, last time we had a meeting, uh, there was uh, the, the expert here assured me that we didn't need to have a landfill no time soon. And, and I think more and more I'm hearing that uh, the county has a lot to offer the city to consider doing a merger to make this more efficient county, including cities that's here, you know? Uh, there's some big towns, Duval, don't want it to be like Duval County, but it's all city and all county, and it's more efficiently run that way. I mean, and, and what, what I've heard, and I've probably said this before, I think I have, everybody, no one wants to lose their uh, their, you know, their salary or, or their career. But uh, I'm sure if, if there's a, a plan set out by somebody smarter than me, to lay it out where everybody wins, you know, especially the taxpayers, nobody loses their job, nobody gets a cut in the pay. Why would anybody object to that? If you had anybody object to it, they're gone, that's it, you know, you, you set it up where they don't lose anything, and, but taxpayers win, and the merger is the way I see that at, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Do this hour, Charlie.
Yeah, I'll talk, I'm gonna take you to yours this time, too. Oh, boy. Um, last time I was here, we had the workshop, we talked about the issues we've had in the springs and things. I was over there today and just want to commend the sheriff and his deputies, they have naked, they're making a difference. It's a whole different atmosphere, a lot of positives are going on now, even there was a, my guys wanted this morning, and there's a group coming in on school, there's so much kids coming in, I said, so, you know that it's making a difference. Issue their work is gonna be the shout-out, about their persistence, we wouldn't be here saying that good things, but thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morris, Mr. Hell, we call you.
He's German.
I know he's more out to come on.
About them recognizing when they retire.
What are you doing, huh? You being a whale, huh?
He's out in businesses. I apologize.
You look like you got a little sun in the night.
Yeah, well, I got enough scars already, so I gotta do a little better job. Mr. Harris supposed to give me a hat, he keep studying, give me a hat, but.
He's gonna do the big straw hat.
He promised me that three months ago, he said, yeah.
I get some rain when you wear it.
I don't worry about anything, so I ain't gotta be cutting it, so uh. Yes.
I just want you to, if what you can mention and what you can't mention, I know, I think you worked so good, Mr. Harris as well, just, we haven't had a real update, but I was, today was a good day, I think.
Yeah, um, you're right, I am tired, it's been some long days, the relation to the day was long, but um, I'm, I'm just really um, thankful um, for the direction. You know, that we're going, the decisions that you guys made with the prior property, um, not everyone, you know, can see what, what's happening, but, but we know that we have limited resources. And when we bring in a company and property that we have, it's gone, and you know, if we don't have no property, we can't bring in more companies, right? And build the tax base, and break jobs, and it's what we do, take the burden off of these guys, right, and ourselves as well. But um, but we know the infrastructure, talking about the grants, absolutely a hundred percent, every one we can get and everything that comes across our desk, and Mr. Harris' desk, and Shannon jumping up and down, and our lobbyists, Mike Bristle, I know, so you've seen those emails, when he sees something, he's sending it all of us, saying, hey, I found another one, I found another one, so. And we gotta have that, um, but, you know, today was, I don't know, it was a little different, I guess. We, we had a company that we worked with a year ago, um, at least that long, um, you know, it didn't work out. And um, you know, we, we recently entered discussions with them again, and uh, so uh, they decided they wanna come for a visit and, and uh, we had the office today, uh, of course, you know, Mr. Harris was there, and Commissioner Hill had worked on that project since the very beginning, so he was there, but Mr. Biggs, Matt Anderson, just appreciated all of them. Uh, had a whole group there, Bristle was doing a lot of stuff for us there, we had um, the railroad, um, which is, we talked about this on that meeting, it's just a whole different world whenever you got the railroad brings their, you know, the chief marshal Walsh over here, and their head engineer over here for a meeting, and spent most of the day with us. Well, as a matter of fact, they just left me when I came here, so, um, the company flew in and, and then, I guess this is what made me so proud about the whole thing, was Mr. Scott, you know, we're, we're working and they called and they want to fly in, and I'm like, well, okay. Um, they didn't really realize we had an airport, I said, you know, you know, we got, we got an airport, you can, you can land a jet on that airport. So, they called me, they chartered the jet, uh, and these people flew all the way across the country, now, they didn't fly from the.
Long ways.
Had a long way, and they hopped on that plane uh, hours and hours earlier this morning, and uh, six of them flew there and landed right out there, and I've got videos, I don't think I saw it too soon, so. It was a pretty plain one, Mr. Scott. Beautiful plane.
We're gonna be replacing, replacing our windows on the administration.
Did they buy any kit?
Well, they did say this now, he said when they came in, the guy said he hit the brakes a little hard, I think he overshot the front, probably a little bit, so, he hit the brakes in pretty hard, but um, his staff out there was, it was just tremendous, cause I called, they made me aware, they sent a courtesy car. Um, we knew they were coming in ahead of time, when the plane came in, everything was coordinated, we were watching it down to the second of when that plane landed. Uh, they would go out there, be, put out, little gold carpet out for it, load it up, uh, we headed over to my office, and uh, we were all sitting there with them, there's about thirteen people in this meeting, and um, it was amazing how we have all the people at the table. That when a question comes up, you can answer the question, and they had our word, that we were gonna do, and then we made it very clear, we're not gonna tell you we can do something, can't do it, but we'll do everything we can do, um.
And I don't think, they didn't try to get you to speak for all you guys, but I wouldn't.
Wait a minute, you did promise a lot of stuff.
And uh, I, I did, I will say this, I did tell them that, you know, and we've talked about this, and for the public, we always say this, and, and I've seen, I've had many conversations about, you know, people, they wanna see a scrub, but they don't wanna see a big Duval County, like Mr. Moses, and I agree with that. I think some of these projects, things we're working on, these are good fit, except for Swan County, for our residents and for our community, and this is the kind of thing that I get excited about, so.
Well, it's funny that uh, you don't, I don't know, you know, Big Brother, wherever he's at, and I guess Logan's got him over there right now, but, uh, I got a call, I mean, right before I got here, and you know, our guys, the DIP, got, called me, and they looked at the app, this great thing. So, I don't know how that got there, but um, I guess it's hard to keep anything a secret, but um, it, it was, it was really good because of the coordinated effort of everybody in the community, always, and those guys flying in, to while they were here, to everybody on the team, just working to make this happen. Uh, and while we were out there afterwards, um, when we talked about some improvements on the campus side, we're waiting for rails to sign out there, um, you know, it's, it's good, cause there was a lot of train, traffic out here today. Right when these people wanted to talk about a rail spur, here come Florida Gulf and Atlanta, and unfortunately, they had unloaded, loaded, unloaded.
They wrapped you in there, dude.
They had them trapped, it's in there, trapped, go out, but we could get in.
Yeah.
But um, but you know, it, it worked because the activity, the guys literally were there, like, holy cow, you know, because you're seeing all the trucks coming in now out there, Benner Holtz, you're seeing the trains back and forth, and the train literally, when he pulled up to stop right in front, it was when we were out there on the site, and there it is, the engine's sitting there running, so it was, I mean, they accused Ms. Cassidy of staging this whole thing. I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, that's out perfectly in place, but uh, we're growing, and people were getting on the radar, and there's a lot of great things coming, but, but one of the things was really, it took a lot of pride, it was when we started to leave the side, we also went down and looked at the new things we were doing outside of this project, with the railroad. And uh, they said, you know, it's, it's interesting, a couple of years ago, um, we were out here, and said, you know, you wouldn't recognize this place out here right now. You know, roads and things, and other things, manicure, um, uh, Benner Holtz is, you know, they were shutting, they were solving those up and running, Matt Coe's expanding, and uh, she said, you know, be sure to tell all the guys, she says, I was really impressed how you all worked it. And uh, so I was sitting thinking, you know, when you guys work the work, go, it really is uh, the way to get things going, and, and I can't thank you all enough, seeing the vision and working it, and um, it's just a, a good day, and, and, and I think meeting with, well, with Mr. Harris, part of all that, and Mr. Hell and everybody else, but I don't know, as, as far as it, I just wanna be sure that the public, it's more than just, when somebody calls me, I mean, there's, or you, 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 you know, you know, like I said, Mr. Scott, um, when we all work together, it's just, it's, it's pretty cool to see the pieces come, come together, so.
Commissioner Hell, I know you said you don't promise anything, but when I get meeting with these companies, I promise when you write the check, it'll go away.
One of those guys starts saying something, and sends us this and the other, and I gotta walk out. I said, y'all need to talk to our economic director. Uh, it was a good conversation, it really was, and those folks were down there, they, they were, you know, joking and promising, having fun, but, but me.
These folks are not opening up.
They're already a year behind, they're a year behind right now, but if they can get, but unfortunately, they're down like some of the other folks, and I see Mr. Wayne right there, he's had these discussions, and you can't get product, there's no way in the world.
It is, yeah, they are, they, they, they're waiting on it, to do this, and do this, and this, or, so um, we just gotta figure out how to put it on the side, but uh, but anyway, it's very promising, probably get this project in the art, I just want them to know that, you know, it's bigger than that. Um, and it was uh, kinda nice to see all that came together, and everybody being able to sit there and have those conversations and work for these companies, um, but um, means a lot, appreciate you guys for what you do.
I'm proud of them, I appreciate them, that's all.
Thank you all, man, appreciate you, appreciate all of you. But I just wanna, you know, I just wanna say something about Jimmy, he, he really does earn his money, and uh, I'm talking to him sometimes at six-thirty in the morning, seven-thirty, eight o'clock at night, you know, it's, it's all the time.
I don't have his, he's talking to me at the same time.
Well, he, he must have a phone in each ear, but he's holding the phone for me all the time, it's, it's Wayne right, I'm under arrest for the record.
No, Wayne right, seven to one, seven thirty-six, thirty-two.
Looks like you've been in the sun the most, too.
I ain't red shoes, but, you know, I, I want to commend y'all, making all the decisions. You know, for years, it's been a fight, get things to come, and when you have to give a stand-up and tell, it ain't just that company, but, but, you know, to Mr. Schmidt, you know, when you're older, you look at things a lot bigger than you're old person. And I'm glad that people look forward to things instead of like, he painted every negative thing that you could paint, and I'm gonna paint a positive. People look at Swan County, they're calling what we have, I know a house builder now, is probably fixing their fifty houses, well needed, we're talking to the realtor, to come out. Uh, but why don't houses are needed, because like Catalyst, it's coming, it's coming in, you gotta, you gotta get workers, for the workers, you gotta have houses, and for all of that, you gotta have infrastructure. And so, like sixty-eight tiers, all that, just planning ahead, uh, they won't come if you don't have the infrastructure. And so, you know, I think the commission's talking a lot of like, with Catalyst, and I remember all the nice areas and all, and I, I remember my remarks, that I'm tired of us exporting activity. Well, we raise them good here, give them good work ethics, and they move somewhere else and make a living. And so, if we look at things as Jimmy laid it out today, it ain't just this company, this company, we talk to somebody every single day. We got a couple of things, order management, uh, I can't thank y'all enough for the, for the, uh, just the difference in how they address us, and their ability and their want to, to help us now. That's all we need, we just needed them to expedite things, where we get them, and uh, you know, that's a hard decision for y'all to stick it out there, but, order management sees that, that, you know, some changes was needed, it's being made. Um, we should have a permit this week, and we start proving some of these, uh, one of the things that I would like y'all to start looking at, is we've never had a permit, probably. We've never had companies coming in and stacking up, and, and sometimes, I don't think county or city has the staff with the expertise to review some of these prints that's coming in, some of these sites that's coming in, we, we just don't have that. And so, I talked with George Curtis last week about his staff being bogged down, bogging theirself down more, but basically, it's not being qualified to, to look at these prints and tell a great family, or any engineer, well, I, I override you. And so, what we need to start looking at is, we need to start looking at, like, like city going, they've done some outside sourcing to where they have a number one and a number two engineer. If the county's too busy or the city's too busy, then the person like me or one of y'all asking a building permit, they would pay an expedited fee of an extra thousand or two thousand dollars to cover that engineer firm to review their prints, to get them permitted, for instance. Fudge, their building's been set out there for a month and a half, city can't, I mean, we got a new builder, his factory gives him home new list, and what they'll do in his factory, and so, they're just chasing the tail. And so, what, what we need to start doing, as some of these big commercial things are coming, one of the things that we need to think ahead of is go ahead and bid this out in some manner, that we have an engineer firm that, uh, for instance, if, if uh, North Florida was the county's, they would be a conflict of interest owner. So, you would have a secondary to, to be able to review those prints, and that way, we can expedite these permits, cause these companies, Travis painted it tonight, interest rates is going up, built uh, stuff is going, they need to be building that, the projections they have today. They don't need to be held up six to nine months, because that project could be a weakness. So, I just want to commend y'all for working together, uh, the community season, uh, one of the things that is mentioned in the night with Sheriff's Department, you know, we, we know all these guys, they, they do a good job here, and that's why Swan County is a destination place, and, and, and I think that uh, we see the community doing better and better and better. And I, I love the fact that we, we can work with the city if possible, uh, they're way behind, but I thank the George, they're, they're trying to catch up, if we can help them, uh, maybe this joint venture, maybe we can do something like that on a building newspaper type permit thing, to where we can share that. Where county didn't need, and city did, you know, but the fees, we pay for that, nothing out of the county or the city's expenses, so appreciate y'all for working on.
Appreciate the comments, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Uh, see, no, I just need a promotion for this year. Come out, I got you on the table here. Mr. Harris, any administrative comments? Mr. Harris, any administrative comments?
Oh, one thing I need to do is remind all of you commissioners that you need to be back here in the mornings. You have a meeting at nine thirty, there will be another meeting prior to your getting here, but you'll have a nine thirty meeting regarding CCBG direction. So I'm just encouraging you to put that on your schedule if you don't already have it there. The other thing I want to comment on briefly is Commissioner Fleming's comments regarding what he's been through, what he's experienced, what he's seen regarding the city, because I saw all of it at the same time. It wasn't pretty, and he felt a lot of headaches and aggravation. And quite frankly, a lot of it had to do with the people that were involved at the Some of you couldn't do anything with, couldn't work with it. But I say that to say this, I've had conversations now with the new city manager, and I don't doubt that many of you maybe have had conversations with him as well. It's entirely different today. He has a desire, he recognizes the need that the city has, and unlike in previous attempts, he's trying to move the city forward, I think, at this time, and recognizes that they have a need. Now, I don't have a lot of experience with the city council members, I don't have any idea where ultimately they're going to be on anything. But today, at the very least, I am encouraged with what's going on. Also, I'm very encouraged, I've attended a lot of meetings lately, like some commissioners have, dealing with some of these businesses, and the really important thing here, it's not that we're all staying busy, but the really important thing is something that Mr. Wayne Wright commented on, that's great jobs. This is all about, and these are some pretty significant numbers, the businesses that we've been talking to and working with represent quite an increase in employment numbers here in this county, and a pretty extensive capital investment here, which as you know, affects headlong, tax revenue going forward. So I too am very encouraged by what's going on, and that's all I have to acknowledge.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Fleming, he already had his show. Anything, Mr. Prabhat?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Yes, sir. Don't mean any harm, but I, this club, I appreciate knowledge, man, of the history, some history, but we, I've had some turbulent times with city, and I've read that long, disappointing times, just wouldn't work with me. But I want to say this, we've told these commissioners up here, the hardworking citizens, great guys, and we all, how, because we all work different, progressive, merriots, I like to clean the road, the road and load it up. I don't like to try to magically manage, just like to see the job done. We got great staff, and they do a great job. I said this before, I work at night, get off at six o'clock in the morning, every time that I'm coming home, I get a phone call, you, you kind of workers out, cause this man out here, they're cutting trees out of the road. People have accidents, my brother had an accident, hit a tree, six o'clock in the morning, a big tree that fell across the road. And I went out to the scene, and I saw these guys working hazardous condition, power lines across the road, could get electrocuted. Just things that just wasn't good. By twelve, eighteen, I seen a lot of things, it's about the changes, some good, some not so good. But I don't like to see commissioners sing along, you know, we all, we all work together, we work really, we try to have a good working relationship, and I appreciate that. At, at our workshop, I was, I was a little bit deterred, and I felt I was angry, and as chairman, we get the opportunity to say anything at the time, but I just want to say it now. And when it came up to a fiasco about the fire station out of Route one twenty-nine, it really burned me. I'm about safety. From the center, we got to put that money in here to get our station built in the District Four area, or District One, Four, even District Two, that included me, too. We got Spirits One, we got Walmart, public type down there, we got influx of people out on Interstate Ten and Seventy-Five, which when I travel at night going and coming, or sometimes I go down Interstate. So when we say that we don't need such, and someone from Tallahassee or from Fleming Island could come in and say that was needed in this county, being born here, raised here, and I see a need, individuals, what about safety? These guys come out at night, Tim, Chief, needs paramedic go out, they put an index on the line. I had a workshop, and it was that bastard, a week later, because there was no protection on the other side of the track. A week later, he got bashed, had a massive heart attack, and he got, he did not survive. So at the time, Chief called and said, Mr. Fleming, said the individual had a heart attack, and didn't make it, he said, no. But it's, it's part of the medical term, and we say, sometimes we don't understand, we don't realize. He said, if I couldn't have gotten there, or my guys could have gotten there five, ten minutes earlier, this individual never could, couldn't survive. Fire station right down the street, city can't do anything about it. So when I hear this, and I see this, it burns me on the inside, because we worked hard to get a station out there. Commissioner Hale, you work hard, has gone in District Four, Commissioner Stapleton's district, I think it's a much needed thing, I think we need to look at that, assess that. And I heard people come to me and tell me, said, we really appreciate what you guys are doing, and what's happening in this county, for it to put protection in place. My mom just turned eighty-six years old Sunday. Several times, fire rescue were called to her house and assisted her. I have a brother that I went to jack him up, because it's been hard here for this, talking about fire in Swanee County, and, and, and Rescue Service. He eventually found out himself how bad this is needed in this county, in all areas of the county. These guys work hard, and I see them out, I'm on Interstate, and I travel, I was on in New York County, I was on in Latchwell County, Columbia County, and potentially up in Tallahassee, Leon County. So when I see that, it, it doesn't sit well for me. I appreciate you guys coming, listening to us, keeping us on our toes, doing what's right, and doing the right things. What I don't appreciate, and we do not appreciate what we're doing. So as chairman, I'm here with that, my wife telling I talk too much, sometimes she tell me I'm too hard, but I don't think so, I just, I had a lot of chance time when I was growing up, how the dad was. If anyone knew, he's very strict, straight, he believed in you doing what you're supposed to do, and that's me. I'm not John Luther Junior, but I think I'm Junior, a lot of, I, I want respect, I want ear respect, and I expect for individuals to do what's supposed to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fleming.
Yes, sir, I have a couple of things here, take just a few minutes, I realize it's hot, I'm just up here, it's always hot, so we're just, I first want to acknowledge Commissioner Fleming, and I've had people ask me in the past, what, what would you like, be like ending when you're finished being a commissioner? And he's what I'd like to be like, somebody that's got the love for Swanee County, somebody that doesn't ever waver, when he gives you the word, he never wavers, never backs down from a challenge, and is absolutely blessed to be in more ways than I can say, and my brother to him. He's told me before, don't matter your color, we all bleed the same, same color. I appreciate that. Tonight, I got to, I want to address this little situation, anytime you get in a political environment, political season, you have things, you have, especially in a small community, you have people on both sides, you have family and friends, and they all know each other, and everybody's trying to pull for that person that they really care a lot about, and feelings start getting hurt, and it's something that I really hate to see. But the issue I want to speak to tonight is one from a couple of months back. I have a public records request, and I want to speak to that, and I want to try to give my side of it, and if there's questions, I would like to answer those at this time. It has to do with a project that was named Skinner's Driveway Project. I got a records request by gentleman, the office let me know, and gave me the packet that they provided. And this time, I went over it, it's been said, and when you say this, this is people that come back to you and say things, and tell you that he said, or she said, or all these things. So I want to address it from my side, and then address questions if needed. The word is that myself, and the project we're talking about is some driveway work at Skinner's Paint and Body Shop on East Ninety. The word is that I'm a relative of Mr. Skinner that owns that Paint and Body Shop, and that is absolutely true, I am relative, distant, but relative. I've known him my whole life, we're very close friends, and him and his family, to those that know him, and many do, he's given more to this community than most anybody knows, because he never wants to be acknowledged for it. Always there to help, it doesn't matter if it's a school football team, it doesn't matter what it is, it doesn't matter if it's a family that's just out of debt, and they don't have money enough for a funeral service, all we got to do is pick up the call, and he's there, give the sheriff's badge. It just hurts my heart when I hear things, and attacks made, and things said, that basically says that me as a commissioner has, that Mr. Skinner has had a conversation to where I went out there and provided a service for him, that I went out there and told the county to go do some driveway construction for him. I can tell you without a shadow of a doubt, right here tonight, and this is from me, it's not hearsay, it's not third party, Mr. Skinner has never asked me to come do a favor for him, because I'm a county commissioner in Swanee County, Florida. It's not happened. It's hearsay. It's, it's folks wanting to start a problem between me and my opponent. That's the furthest thing from the truth. I read, I read the story, I read the, good packet of information that our office provided on the public records request, I read through it, twenty, March twenty twenty, there's a road beside his business that was chip sealed, it says it's the, it was the thirteenth item on the agenda, I believe, it was on the consent agenda. I don't recall ever having a conversation about me telling anyone at the county to put this on the consent agenda, or to ask to be it put on the agenda, or anything. I will say this, most of the time when a road's gone, or a chip seal road's gone, it's years into planning, way ahead of time, to ever be on the list, to be considered, to be fixed. I will go even a step further, on that night, on the public record, March third, twenty twenty, I was the chairman, I cannot make a motion to approve anything, as chairman, just gentlemen, I want to tell you that, you sit there and wait for one. Commissioner Gamble moved to approve that consent agenda that evening, I can't second it, I'm the chairman, Commissioner Richardson seconded that, and a motion carried unanimously to be approved. It wasn't Commissioner Stapleton, it said, hey, I got a cousin out here on the east side of town that needs to have a, a road chip sealed by his business, the man's been in business for forty plus years, employs eight to ten people, has done it without a lawyer, and it's a true disrespect to a family that gives so much, by any of those involved. I come from a, a good place, I want this to be presented, I want to tell everyone in this audience, and everyone that's viewed on this camera, and everyone that views it in the future, those are attacks, they're political attacks, they're in a hot, heated political environment. Some colorful, some respectful, we can all be better. Just to clarify, that, that project was listed as four concrete driveway aprons off of US The trucks documented going back and forth of that job, hauling material, dump trucks, they all put Skinner's, because it's a recognizable name, on a sign that's been there for forty years. So folks, take it without doing any further research, it's hearsay, and says that Commissioner Stapleton went out there and fixed four driveway aprons. If you'll go on the property appraiser's website and pull up those four aprons, two of those aprons belong, are in front of, not, do not belong because they're state driveway, they're in front of Touchings, Heaton Air, those are great people, wonderful people, known them most of my life. There again, another business that's probably forty plus years, they have two driveways. Did anyone from Touchings come and ask me questions about new driveways? Never happened. Mr. Skinner has one driveway out of the board, it's named One. Mr. Skinner never come to me and ask me a question about it. The next driveway in question is Casino, where the car used to be. Now, the Patriots group is with us tonight, wonderful group, do great work. I really wish Mr. Hannibal was here to, for me to be able to speak, and to, and to recognize him for his unbelievable work on getting rid of the gambling casinos that we have a lot of in Swanee County. I was, he called me and asked me for support, and I was on board, probably one of the first commissioners that jumped on board, spoke up for it, fought to the end, there again, talked about ridicule, because I went, what's best for Swanee County? But, but that's who I am. I'm not going to let, I'm not going to not stand up for what's right, because someone has intimidation, or wants to place fear about it, it's not me. Anybody that knows me knows the fight, and the burning desire I have for Swanee County, and the love I have for it. To speak of this last driveway in front of that casino, my question is tonight, why, if I'm the most, biggest advocate of the board of county commissioners, why would I go and say, let's put a brand new driveway in front of this casino? And I turn around and shut the casino down? Some things just aren't adding up. I, you know, there again, I want to be very respectful, that's really all I have to say on the issue. At this time, I would ask the chairman to open the floor for public comments again, I know this is late, but if someone has a comment... but if someone has a comment, trust me a hundred percent, I, I'm not here to call anyone out. I'm here to just answer what's, the questions that are posed that I think need answers. So from a respectful place, at this time, I'm not saying anybody's got to ask me a question, but I'm offering the floor to the gentleman that done the records request, or my opponent. If there's a question I can answer tonight, I'd be more than happy to. And I say that respectfully, I want to leave, I want to leave here, and I want to, I want to move forward.
I, I, I don't want to turn this into a political thing here tonight.
I think you already have, it was on state driveways.
Whoa, 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 if you want to speak, come up here to the podium. I don't want it to be, I admit, it may be political, you have your say on it. Let's, let's leave it at that, let's, let's move on. Commissioner Fleming?
I want to tell you all some good news, something that, we got a lot of good news here tonight, with what, what's going on in the county's Florida Department, that's been gross, but, I was a part of something at the end of last week, that I didn't know the county commissioner got involved with. I, I haven't, I want to share this story with two other people, and neither of them are here, one of them is alive. But I had a family contact me, they were sent to contact me, that, that live here in Swan County. And they were having trouble in Tallahassee, they're, they're in the process of adopting their biological granddaughter. And she's nine. Unfortunately, her parents aren't, aren't great parents, she's been in and out of foster care in the state of Georgia on most, the last three to five years, probably. I'm going off a little bit of memory, what the lady told me on the phone. But his grandparents are residents of Swan County and city of Lavo, but they're going through the adoption process of trying to adopt their biological granddaughter. Well, they reached out to me, they have their granddaughter now, but they have, they have her for, I think on June, June, June twenty-fourth was the deadline, if the state of Florida didn't get this paperwork back to the state of Georgia, adoption agency. They're going through the process, but there's, there's, she's with them for an extended period of time, but that expired on June, or expired on June twenty-fourth. And they reached out to me, and I can't take any credit for this, all I did was pass it off, but, you know, they wanted to reach out to our state representative, so I reached out to Jason Cho's office, he's going to be our, our new one, I don't know when that goes into effect, but he's been making trips here, so. I reached out to him to see if he could help, and I didn't speak to him directly, but I spoke to his aide, Preston. And, and Preston asked me, he said, hey, will you get the caseworker's name in Tallahassee? I forget the state agency, the case number, the grandparents' names, and let's see what we can do to expedite this, because on June twenty-fourth, the state of Georgia was demanding that girl back to this foster home. Their period was, it was last, if this paperwork get to get back to the state of Georgia's agency, ECF or whatever they call it. In short, the girl's foster home in which they got her from, and I forget the period, a month ago, two months ago, was no longer, they were full. So this little girl, this little nine-year-old, was going to go to a new foster home. Totally new environment, she's nine, leaving her grandparents' house. So I got the information from, and I'm not going to name her names, I'm not, I mean, I'm not, I'm not going to do that. I know who they are, they know who they are, they're not here tonight. They didn't know I was going to tell this story, but it really touched me. Within twenty-four hours, they got the paperwork in Tallahassee to the state of Georgia, and the state of Georgia extended her stay, and they're going to get that little girl. It worked. They sent me pictures, I mean, they, I didn't know anything, I didn't do anything. All I did was reach out to someone, they didn't know who to reach out to, or how to get ahold of. And being a commissioner, we have cell phone numbers that, that get us in contact with people a little quicker than the average citizen, and I can respect that, because there was a day when I was just an average citizen. That happened last week, and this little girl can be a few weeks away from kind of grown up. But I got my grandchildren, and I just, I just touched me, I didn't know the commissioners, I didn't know the state representatives, but all they had to do was expedite. It turns out the caseworker in, in Tallahassee was on vacation, so her paperwork was sitting in his stack, because he was out of town, and that deadline was rapidly approaching. Commissioner Cho got it pulled, got, they got it tracked down, they got it found, it was already in the approval process, just needed a rubber stamp, and they got it done. I just want to share that with you all, and everybody's staffs here, got a lot of good things going on, but that is totally away from county business that, you know, I got to experience.
That's great. Thank you, Colonel.
I mean, I, I can't take anything for granted.
Commissioner Hightower? Can you finish me?
Yes, sir. I agree with all of you guys, Mr., and Mr. Fleming is probably one of my peers too, but maybe for a different reason, he's the only guy I know that for his watch anniversary can give a hand.
That's like a hero.
Yeah, he told me that trick yet. But, no, I just appreciate, I'll go back to the day, because again, some of these exciting things are happening, and I do appreciate everyone that was involved, and, you know, there's a lot of things going on right now. Something, you know, that's core there, and I try to always mention this when I can, you know, when it comes to me, but. I'll tell you guys again, we never know when our number's going to be called. I was talking to a, a person in my district on a Wednesday, and on Saturday, it was like, it was passing fast. It just happens that quick, you know, so I won't take anything for granted, that's all I can say. Every day, cherishing, I appreciate you, the chairman, there's been some talk about it, I have seen on the Facebook, social media, things going on, appreciate your dedication and the hard work, and getting out there and working our springs, I appreciate that. That means a lot, and again, that's full fold, makes our county a better place for us.
I appreciate that, and since you mentioned that, you know, the, the robbery thing, you know, is that, you know, it is, because people just like you, when we, when we get information, we put it out there, you know, as a matter of nature, when we got him ID'd, it was people just like you out here in the audience helps us with it. So in all, I'll tell them full circle, and thank you for mentioning that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And that's really all, yeah.
I want to thank you, Chair, for getting on the springs and working that pretty hard.
Make a difference, make a difference, Chairman.
Appreciate you. I just want to thank the staff and the people at the building department for having to put up with, I don't know if it's put up with, but having to take all the phone calls. And I'm sure it's been pretty stressful, and I know it's been a lot of hard work, but it's, I think it's a necessary step to get to where, to where we need to go. I also like to thank the board for always, you know, we've all seen the work we're doing together, always seems to work out, and I just wanted to keep thinking of the Mowley family, and they lost L.J. Mowley this week, and just keep them in your prayers. I let Mr. Stapleton have his say tonight on this, but it's not political for me. I just don't want an argument here in this boardroom over something that's political. He's a commissioner, he can say what he needs to say, and I didn't let anybody come up here and speak tonight, because I don't want it to turn into a war of borders in this boardroom. If you want to have that, you can do it at your own party, but we're not going to do it here. So we'll just let that go, but I understand the motion, Chairman.
As chairman, I want to tell you that I appreciate that. I mean, that's the law, that's the right way, the right thing to do. Appreciate these guys, gentlemen, thank you so much. But I, 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 I want to mention this, talking about the death, had, had a friend of mine who's telling me about individuals that have passed away, but young men that I really, 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 I believe, belong to the nice mentality, and I'm at work. Good names come, come across, and they kind of make it right over there. You hear stuff, you hear names, and it will hurt, follow you, but I just wanted to mention that too, believe in, pray for everybody. Commissioner Hill, he said, you know, we don't know what happened from day to day, one day to the next, but. When we leave here tonight, somebody will not come back. And I say, it's, it's, it's good, it's good to say for us to, to remind us, but there's a prayer one for them, to try to work together, if you like names, you go straight and, and.
Thank you. But I understand the motion, it's, I'm a motion back, Commissioner Lynn. Second, second back, Commissioner Hale, all the way around.